Good evening, everyone. This is the May 14th, 2018 Committee of the Whole Meeting of the DeKalb City Council. A reminder for any folks who wish to speak to the council tonight as part of public participation, we'd ask that you kindly fill out a speaker request form and give it to our deputy city clerk, Ruth Scott, prior to that item being called, and we'd be delighted to hear you speak to any topic. Roll call for this meeting, please.
Jacobson.
Here.
Fanouken.
Here.
Markwart.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
Norrico.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Faber.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. There are no items on the regular agenda, that are also on the regular agenda for this meeting, and before we get to our one consideration this evening, are there any folks who have given you a form, Ruth?
No, no one has.
Okay, so I'm going to assume that no one from the public wishes to participate in this part of the Committee of the Whole Meeting. Let's move on to our one consideration tonight, and that is tax increment financing assistance for smaller projects policy discussion. I'd like to ask our economic development planner, Jason Mitchnick, to speak on this item. Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This is coming at the request of council a couple of weeks ago at the community development budget meeting that we had. There was a request for us to bring some policy discussion and potential program outlined for smaller TIF-related projects. To go back a couple of months at our September 19th Committee of the Whole, we talked about TIF and TIF phase-out and really started having a conversation on how the remaining funds in our two TIF funds should be allocated, and there had been general consensus from council that we really wanted to concentrate on maximizing return on investment, looking for transformational projects that ultimately have that return. Staff went forward with that policy direction and through the conversations that we've had and other potential requests from existing property owners and business owners, we did pass that message along on some specific projects and requests that were for minor improvements that were either related to general maintenance or aesthetic improvements or non-aesthetic improvements that didn't necessarily have any return on investment for tax generation. I think that had led to some perception and some mistrust within the community and downtown business owners and property owners that TIF funds were solely for those that had the financial capacity to take on multimillion-dollar investments and that TIF wasn't, so to speak, for the small guys. So this evening, we want to go through the architectural improvement program based on what the city has used for smaller projects. This is the one program that would be easiest for us to classify those smaller projects in that, and it's an existing program that the city has some history with. So we're going to try to hustle through some background on the AIP program. I want to thank Christine for her extensive research that she did looking at how other communities use TIF or do go about facade improvements. And then after that, we're going to, we have several policy questions that we want to open the floor to council to discuss. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Christine to go through some of the best practices and common practices from other communities.
Good evening, council. So we looked at a bunch of different communities to take a look at how they do their facade improvement grants. So many municipalities do have similar programs that integrate facade improvement grant programs and TIF. Each of these programs are aimed at improving the facade and exteriors of the buildings, usually with a focus on the central business district of the municipality. And typically, these building improvements are aimed at preserving character, encouraging pedestrian-friendly atmospheres, and encouraging the conservation of historic buildings. So then we looked at a diverse set of municipalities, which is listed above. I won't read all of them, but it was about 18 communities, 17 communities in total. And so in terms of funding, almost every city uses a matching one-to-one reimbursement basis for eligible projects up to a certain amount. So this is typically a maximum of 50% of verified eligible expenses. However, some cities do utilize different percentages for different project types. For example, grants awarded for capital improvements shouldn't exceed $10,000, and a minimum of 25%, 25% of the total grant award is applied to aesthetic improvements with a maximum of $50,000, which is 50% of $100,000 verified eligible expenses. Other cities use a tiered system of matching, so up to 25% of total project costs can be eligible for maintenance work while 50% of total projects can be eligible for building improvements or historic structures such as complete facade renovation or life safety ADA compliance. Some cities do use alternative systems of funding, however. Low-interest TIF loans, which with typically prime rate interest, can be used in addition to the more commonly-used reimbursement matching grant programs. And these loans are not longer than 10 years or the life of the remaining term of the TIF district. Loan principles might be amortized based on a longer term with a balloon payment due at the end of the loan. And the city may loan up to 80% or up to even 100%, but typically, it's 80% of the eligible project costs, but generally, again, not an excess of 80%. And all of these TIF loans do require collateral. Another form is interest subsidies, which uses TIF funds to defray portions of interest expenses on commercial financing for eligible projects. And subsidies are limited to 10% of the annual expenses for a period not to exceed 10 years. Additionally, one-time cash rebates per building are used by some cities with 33.33%, so a third, up to $20,000 available for facade work only, or 50% up to $50,000 available for all categories with a life safety emphasis. During project review, applications are reviewed by staff for compliance with all program guidelines, which include compliance with the city zoning ordinances. So this inspection might be completed by the city's building and zoning department staff, and it's conducted to inventory any violations of the property maintenance, building, or zoning codes. And applicants don't have to be in complete code compliance at the time of application for the program, but they do have to be compliant on the building exterior before reimbursement can be made. And again, that's just what some cities do. Some cities also ask for proof of adequate financing at the front end of the project. Applications can include sections of project financing, which requires the applicant to provide descriptions of cost estimates, and also a section that requires the applicant to break down the source of these fundings and which funding source is expected to fund what category. Other stipulations include a minimum of 10% of the project cost, which must be funded through owner's equity, and that letters of commitment from all funding sources must be submitted and listed. A "for" argument is also required on many of the applications, and the applicant must have indicated whether or not they explored alternative financing methods for the proposed And in order to help the reviewing committee decide what kind of projects should be focused on, some cities place projects into different categories: new business construction, business relocation, expansion, or rehabilitation, which includes interior remodeling, exterior upgrades, architectural signage, et cetera. They also place them into facade restoration grants and loans, emergency structural repairs, or ADA life safety building code, and electrical rehabilitation. Some cities also require the applicant to follow design guideline and review as set forth by the city, and many cities reimburse up to 100% of architectural structural analysis up to a certain amount, typically about $1,500. In the project selection and completion process, most cities consider applications on a, sorry, on a first-come-first-served rolling basis until funding is depleted. And also, other cities use a set list of criteria with an emphasis on return on investment, job creation, the amount of private to public investment, and the diversity of services to supplement and diversify the existing business mix within the area. First priority is given to properties that have never received a grant, and for returning applicants, it is a one-time basis per building, or the city implements a wait period following successful participation before an address is eligible again. Finally, once a project has been approved, often there is a mandated time period to begin the project, such as 12 months from the date of a grant approval to begin the project, and 18 months from the date of the grant approval to complete the project. And then extensions are needed to begin or complete the project after the mandated deadline extensions are eligible to apply for. So that's it for the common practices, and I'm going to turn it back over to Jason.
So to go through a history of the city's AIP projects, records indicate that this program is nearly 20 years old, so some of the earliest projects were in fiscal year 2000, and there were projects that were approved and supported in all those years between 2000 and 2017, except for '12 and '14. The program is also supported and administered by not just the city, but also Main Street DeKalb, and then also Renewed DeKalb, so they had a significant part in going out and finding projects, going through, helping businesses through that application, and then bringing them forward to council for consideration. And the previous, looking at the several iterations of the guidelines from 2000 to the most recent, which was 2013, the program really was focused on historic preservation and aesthetic improvements. So there was some guidelines in there that said that new construction, expansion of businesses or buildings, and residential improvements did not qualify, which I'll hit on in a couple of slides. And then also, code compliance items would only be considered if they were also going to be improving the appearance of the building. So looking at the summary of funding in total, so fiscal year 2000 through 2017, and then this does also include the Forge AIP, which has still not been paid out yet, but is pending. So $622,000 was provided by the city, and then that was matched by 1.1 million in private investments. So the program is relatively successful in bringing in a total of roughly $1.73 million in investment in mostly the downtown area. Couple examples of some projects, so this is 235 East Lincoln Highway. So the picture there on your left was the previous, before the building was painted and improved, and then on the right is the after picture, and the building still stands. So they painted the brickwork, the awning, and then also rehabilitated that architectural feature at the top of the building. This next one is 241 East Lincoln Highway, which is interesting. So there on the left is, it's Greek to me, which is the original facade. And then they received a grant for a full facade replacement, which is the after picture in the middle, and then the tenant there has changed and hometown added an awning at a later date. What's interesting about this project is because of the guidelines at the time when this was approved, where they didn't allow funding under AIP for residential improvements, this building's second floor is currently vacant. So when they received grant funding, they were not allowed to receive funding to make improvements to the second floor, add apartment units, and has then thus sat unutilized. So here's an example of a property where you looked at just the aesthetic improvements of a building and didn't add to the actual viability, didn't consider the return on investment necessarily, or could have added at least one apartment unit on the second floor. Also wanted to go through two recent projects in facade replacements. So this is 223 and 229 East Lincoln Highway that are part of the Plaza de Kal project. So looking at the two eastern buildings, so the gray and the red buildings that had been painted, from the outside, we knew that there was some issues. We didn't know quite how bad it was going to be. Talking to Mr. Pappas, he thinks that he could have potentially gotten away with just doing some basic tuckpointing and repainting. However, he wanted to know that he was actually increasing the viability and health of those buildings, so that's why he wanted to go through and pull the brick down, see what issues there were, and re-brick them. So this is on the middle building, so you can see that white metal panel right above the awning. So this is what was found behind it. So there was some water damage, and once they had pulled that plywood off, they actually found that the original support beam, which was made out of wood and roughly 100 years old, was still there, had some water damage. It started to bow from the weight of the facade above it over decades. So what he ended up doing was pulling that out, putting a new steel beam that spans across the storefront, and then also adding another secondary beam to support the remaining load of the second-floor brick in that building. So that's the picture there. On the right is the new structural support that was added. And he would not have known that if he hadn't started pulling down and doing a full demolition of the facade, he would not have discovered that the actual structural support of the building needed to be modified and enhanced. This is a picture of the upper floors, so the residential units on that same building. Here, that picture on the left, you can see the brickwork after they had pulled down the framing and the drywall. It has some signs of water damage. Also interesting to note is you can kind of tell from the edge of that picture that the top of the window frame is where the ceiling line was, and then that picture on the right was taken a couple of weeks ago. This is where they're currently at. There's about four feet above where they had past issues with water damage to the roof leaks and whatnot. You can see the drywall there right above the water damage in the picture left, where they looked at kind of just a spot treatment repair to the drywall. They just kept dropping the ceilings. When an issue had happened, they'd make a slight repair, put a new drop ceiling in. So there was actually three drop ceilings in that building that they ended up demoing. So the point, the purpose of pointing these out is when considering these smaller aesthetic-only improvements using TIF, you aren't necessarily always getting into the deeper issues that may be present in a building. So we really want to make sure that we're not making investments in buildings that aren't, have significant health issues. So now we're going to go through a series of about 10 policy questions. So I'm going to frame a question, provide a little bit of background, and then turn it over to council for discussion. So the first question is the total amount of budget that council desires for the AIP for 2018, and what is the maximum award that you'd like to see per project? Currently, in the approved budget, $50,000 was allocated for the architectural improvement program. However, there are some line items where we would potentially be able to transfer. One of the things that came up in the budget discussion for community development was placeholder for property acquisition, which we don't specifically have a project slated for that, but we could transfer some of that over to increase the amount of funding for AIP from 50 to a higher amount. So that'd be the first question that I have for council.
Before I turn it over to city council, could I ask a couple of questions on your presentation?
Sure.
Prior to this question? You mentioned the scenario where the one building, because of the past requirements, did not do anything with the tenant space upstairs, so it's been empty. So this is a scenario where if we looked at a building that had the capability to have tenants upstairs, we could simply include tenant restoration space into the qualifying parameters. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Ultimately, that would come down to the amount of maximum funding that a project could receive to.
I understand, but I mean, it would give the incentive to an owner to do something with that space upstairs. You know, you look at those buildings, and you say, "God, they look good." It's too bad that the owner could not have done something with the upstairs and gleaned some rent off of it, you know? And it would be, I would think, for some folks, a wonderful place to live, right in the middle of downtown, in a nice building. So my second question is, on the ripout of the facades, it would appear to me that before we simply say, "We'd like this to be painted," or "We'd like it to be improved," there'd have to be some inspection process as it relates to the feasibility of having that rotted wood, et cetera. Is that not correct?
That's correct, and that'll be one of the questions that we get to.
Okay, yeah, I understand. I've gone through the material beforehand. One other question. There was some concern when Plaza de Kal was in its formative stages, that we were in a position where we may have been interfering with landmark status, that some of the things that came up with our Landmark Commission. So my comment, I guess, I don't have a question, is that I think we want to be careful going forward, that we do respect the program of our Landmark Commission, and at the very least, get their input as it relates to buildings like this. Now, having taken time for a couple of questions, are there any specific thoughts from what we've heard thus far, and are there any specific questions regarding answers to this question here that Jason has posed? Alderman, Norrico.
Jason, I'm curious, before addressing this question and the others, do you have a sense of how many people are lined up looking for these dollars and what kinds of projects and so forth? I mean, I don't want to, in other words, I don't want to make a decision in a vacuum.
Absolutely. I would say, over the last year, I've had dozens of conversations with people that are interested in receiving TIF funds, where that conversation, when I talk about the policies that council had discussed, and the projects that they were looking to do, and then also what the, what kind of documentation that we would need from the city to even bring a project forward to council for consideration, so that we are able to answer all the questions in terms of return on investment, what the project looks like. Fewer of those conversations go down that road. I would say that it really just depends. There was quite a few requests for smaller projects, which is exactly why we're having the conversation this evening, is there had been some requests for solely window replacement, or tuckpointing, or some general maintenance things, demolition costs, and then getting buildings back to a viable shell, commercial shell.
Okay, so it sounds like they range from relatively small scale to more major, you know, in terms of, you know, from the windows, which I realize is not necessarily small, but, you know, up to kind of a demolition.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Alderman Jacobson.
Again, going through this project and understanding some of the business owner and building owner issues downtown, again, I think we've spent quite a bit of money on purely aesthetic improvement issues down there, things like paint and awnings that have very limited lifestyle or life, that's the word I'm looking for, lifespans. And none of those were maintained. I think that was the biggest issue that I've had down there. When you drive down the street, looking at the Paint the Town project we did, looking at the awning project, again, they lasted four or five years and were some really nice lipstick on a pig to take some pictures and use in our marketing materials. But the reality is, I think, that because of the moving line that we've had for many years on AIP and how it changes, that I'd like to see some more actual hard building improvements. Again, where the council goes with that, I guess, is up for interpretation, but in being on the downtown cleanup and looking at some of the issues down there, tons and tons of windows have been boarded up with plywood and left to sit that way for years and years and years. The fire escapes on most of those buildings are literally to a point where they are, I wouldn't feel safe standing on or under them. Those are the improvements that I think we should target down there, and at the same time, target a friendly code enforcement effort to go down and identify some of those issues, rather than just say, "Hey, this is bad, and you as the owner need to fix it right now, or we're going to shut the building down." We've seen, obviously, some of the community's dislike of that mentality, whether right or wrong, and I think it would be helpful to couple any plan we do with pre-inspections, effectively going through and identifying, and saying, "Hey, yes, we want you to replace a $20,000 or $30,000 fire escape, but the city can help you afford that improvement to keep the long lifetime viability of this building sound and stable. And here's some cosmetic things, hard improvements, whether it's tuckpointing, or windows, or storefronts, or those things, that make sense, that will add life to the building and have a return on value in terms of tenancy." If the discussion is, "Hey, I want to paint my building, I'm sorry, we've already done those projects. We've expended several hundred thousand dollars in that effort." For me, I'd like to see hard improvements. And again, I think the reality is, for a budget, we have a budget. I don't know where we want to go toward that number. Obviously, it depends on the projects that come in, and I don't want to turn anyone away. If we're talking a 25% or 50% incentive, depending on what we're looking at, again, for new business generating, job creating, viability improvements, I would accept 50%. For those that are more deferred maintenance projects, roofs and facades and some of the other things, if they're not architectural or historical, I feel comfortable at the 25 level, acting as a force multiplier to get the downtown cleaned up. I'm tired of driving through the downtown and just shaking my head at projects, saying, "We've put so much money into this place, and a lot of the buildings still look rough."
Alderman Markwart, I believe, first.
Sure.
Then Alderman Fanouken.
Yeah, I would, personally, I'd be in favor of taking the whole $500,000 and using it for the structural part, for the improvements, for the buildings, and yeah, work with them to keep that part of it going, where we've done some major things down here, where they're structural changing, putting new buildings, or reusing old buildings, and I think that will enable us to use those second floors.
Yeah.
You know, and to assist with, because there are other buildings that the second floor is just, you know, they don't have, it's not cost-effective for them to bring that second floor up to code on their own, where we can create an investment and an impetus to start that going, more than just facade.
Alderman Fanouken.
Dave, I think you and I are going to agree on something here, that I think as any part of these things, there has to be that code enforcement part, so that we're not slapping paint on a building on the outside when the inside's falling down. So I think that that's an important piece of the puzzle, that that code enforcement has to be a piece of this. And if that means, so part of the application process is at least a somewhat limited inspection by our building officials, I think that's still important, and maybe preclude some of the other things that we've run into over the last couple of months.
Alderman Verbic.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, going back to your very first concern, Alderman Jacobson, I'm not sure if it goes back to code enforcement, or are you looking for language that if they benefit from an incentive of some type, that they are required to keep this maintained as a result of receiving that incentive? Would that help?
I think it's both. Again, I envision it as more of a pre-planned assessment, sending code enforcement down to downtown and targeting it for 30 or 40 days, not targeting buildings, but targeting that neighborhood in terms of putting up a cohesive effort to do all the buildings, not just the ones that are being, that are coming right now. There's owners that may not know that their fire escape isn't up to code. There's owners, especially some of the more absentee owners, that may not know what some of the issues are if they're not here every day, where code enforcement can help identify those, and again, come with a carrot to stick, saying, "Yes, this is what the city expects you to do going forward, to keep the building up, and here is a source of some force multiplier money to help you get these projects underway." And then, yes, I think there should be some responsibility at the back end. Once we finally get there and get these things cleaned up, that the owners have to step up and maintain them long-term. If we're going to put our money into them, again, it can't be a short-term. If we're going to put our money into them, again, it can't be a short-term pretty fix. It's got to be something that has lasting value for the taxpayer.
Jason, I know you have 10 questions you wanted to ask us tonight. And I would venture to say we're probably not going to get through to number 10. So, I want you to take the liberty of, as you, as you hear some comments, to feel free to skip a question or go to another question.
Absolutely.
They don't necessarily have to be in the order in which you presented them to us for background information.
Sure. So, going on to the next question, and I think I've heard council hit on this a little bit, but should, should all eligible projects be considered? Are there specific types of projects that the program would focus on? So, thinking about this previously was really towards the historic preservation and architecture or aesthetic improvements to the exteriors of buildings, looking at what some other communities have done and what needs to be done in our downtown area. Do we also look at supporting building owners that have structural issues, similar to what we found when we went through the Annex Building? Fire life safety, the replacement or repair of fire escapes? Or do we assist with code compliance issues when we do an inspection? I think the idea of treating these inspections as a consultative service rather than we're going to come through and anything that we find, we're going to turn around and incite you for, that's not at all what we have been trying to do. I've had the opportunity over the last year to go through several buildings in the downtown with some of our inspectors. None of those walkthroughs have resulted in citations for violations that may have been found. Again, this is the carrot approach to try to, try to help building owners know that there are resources out there available for them, how we would potentially codify a policy where, you know, what happens if, if we do find significant violations on a walkthrough? To give a, to share a story on a specific request, when one owner did come forward and discussed wanting to make a request for a project and we said, we would really like to do a walkthrough of your building, that they at that point pulled out of that request because they didn't want to necessarily open a can of worms, so to speak, when they go through. There was a fear generally of having an inspector walk through, through a building and saying, here, you have to fix all these things and, oh, by the way, you no longer qualify for TIF funding. So I guess this question is really, do we want to look at all eligible projects that would fall under TIF? Or do we really want to focus in on the health of buildings or the full gamut?
Alderman Favor.
Well, I think as has been stated, I don't, you know, if there's been neglected maintenance, you know, there'd be, I think the consensus would be, everybody else can join in, to be, you know, that would be on the 25% if it's, if it's, you know, deferred maintenance or something like that. We've already spoken about the aesthetic program didn't have lasting value and because beneath the aesthetics that were, you know, there might be, you know, crumbling facades, there might be leaks through the back, behind the brick facade. So, yeah, I, my only concern is, I guess, what do we do when we find that pig? So, is that, is that a can of worms you're going to open up? That we're going to find the pig that we can't put the lipstick on? And do we buy the building and what happens to that? So, but, no, I would, I would be more towards, you know, again, long-term, structural, health of the building, safety.
Alderman Jacobson.
We're going to find the pig regardless, whether it's through this plan or through a fire life safety inspection or through, I mean, we've seen that now that there's a different focus in those inspections, we're seeing issues that haven't necessarily come to light, that have existed over time. I think the reality is, we're going to deal with that pig one way or another. And if we could do it, again, right now, upfront, with all of the properties cleaning up and turning over, it'll be another discussion we have to have of what comes forward. But it's not as if that pig doesn't exist somewhere down there already and that this is going to suddenly create it. No, it's there somewhere, I'm sure of it. We'll have to figure out what to do with it as far as I'm concerned.
Alderman Norrico.
I would be willing to consider exterior aesthetic improvements if they were tied into, for example, a business expansion. In other words, in order to make the facade a unified front, you have to change this piece because you're doing major work on, you know, an adjacent property. You know, something like that. Otherwise, I agree that I don't just want to, you know, put on paint. So Alderman Jacobson and I do agree yet again.
Alderman Verbig.
Just wanted to say thank you for all of this work, the comparable communities and their efforts. That's been very helpful in getting ready for this evening. And I guess my question is to council, you know, we're talking, we see that word budget. Well, do we need to first agree on a policy matter discussion? What is that overall budget? For example, what are we going to do about this building? What will that be? Will that be replacement of HVAC? You know, what is the bottom line needs, what are the bottom line needs of this building? So I think on the, on the larger scale, from a policy standpoint, we need to have the discussion of where we're prioritizing all of that remaining TIF budget.
Okay. Are you getting some consensus? Excuse me, Alderman Fagan.
I'm, I'm going along with everybody else's consensus. You know, the things we have to really look at is, what concerns me is the percentage of what we want, you know, 25% or 50% reimbursement, like we've got here in number four, 25% reimbursement for windows projects only. You know, I'd have a hard time giving somebody 25% just to replace their windows. You know, considering, like you said, going in and doing a thorough inspection of the building. And then again, when you're talking about HVAC, I mean, we can put HVAC in a building, but what's going to go wrong next year? Then again, we're on here on number seven, the quote "but for reason" on justifying the grant money. I think that's really important, that especially on some of these older buildings, resources involved, what they can and can't get. I mean, that has to come into play also. Thank you.
Okay. Jason.
I think so far I've heard support for this, for moving in this direction, but would applicants be required to undergo an inspection of the building to determine overall health of the structure? Stop me if I am incorrect, but I think everybody's nodding their head.
Yes.
Next question is, are all projects eligible for reimbursement on a matching basis, up to 50%? Or do we want to identify specific projects and take a tiered approach where you'd have smaller percentages for specific types of projects? And then if so, what, what kinds of projects would we, would we support at a lower level? I heard Alderman Favor mention deferred maintenance would be a lower percentage. Or do we also look at some of these other projects where they don't necessarily add value to the building, but they add potentially efficiency or longevity? Do we look at those as also a smaller percentage?
Alderman Fanouk.
Well, Jason, I think that's part of the discussion that's going to go forward is Alderman Fagan said, you know, 25% on just windows, you know, maybe seems like a lot, but depending on the project, it might be appropriate. And maybe we don't have a fixed scale, but we have some kind of floating scale. But I think that's something that's going to take a much longer discussion amongst council than just the few minutes we have here this evening.
Okay.
So this is a question in regards to how incentives will be paid out. Do we want to use a reimbursement basis only? So, the applicant would front-load and pay for all the improvements and then submit paperwork to the city for reimbursement? This is how we've handled a lot of the projects in the recent past. Another option that we could look at, especially if there are building owners that are, that want to make improvements but may not have the financial capacity to take on the full project and front-load that themselves. What we could use is a title company where each, each party, the city being one, provides the 50% to the title company and then we have an agreement on how those funds could be dispersed. So would it be one, the other, or both would be the question?
Good question. Alderman Fagan.
I've got a problem with this. I think reimbursement after the project's finished or portion of. My problem is, what if we do the escrow? And we get 50% through the project and they bail? And we've got 50% of our money there and a 100% problem. And that's where I have a problem on escrowing it being paid while the progress was being going on.
Is there consensus with that is probably what we want to do? Or do we want to keep that option open for what Alderman Fagan is arguing against?
Well, I think, if I may, I think I'd like to agree with Pat and say that because these are going to be much smaller scale projects than what we've been dealing with, that it'd be very appropriate not to make any reimbursements until after the project is completed to our satisfaction along with it, you know. So let's just say it's a $40,000 project and we, you know, committed 10. Well, let's make sure that the project gets done and then reimburse that $10,000 afterwards.
And there were some scenarios in the background material that we got in terms of when we would want that reimbursement, 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, whatever.
And, you know, I don't think that's putting too much of a burden on persons doing the work because if they go to the bank and they've got pretty much a promissory note from us on $10,000 on a $40,000 project, 25 or 50, I mean, that's, that's good for them. So, I don't think that we'd be putting the burden back on the building owner.
Okay. Jason, moving forward.
Sure. I think this, this could potentially hit on the point of what would you do in a situation where you got halfway through a project and they ran out of fundings or, or funding or pulled out? Would be, what kind of guarantee does the applicant have to provide? That they have adequate funding at the front of the project to cover all expenses? And then also a contingency? So calculated contingency into the project would allow potentially to avoid that situation. Something like this could be a letter of credit that says that they do have the adequate funds in order to take on the project. So would council want all applicants to provide some, some sort of guarantee that they can actually complete the project that they're getting funding for?
Alderman Fagan.
What do we do now?
I do not, I do not believe that we require any kind of guarantee at the front end of a project currently.
Good. Well, getting back to what I was saying before, it was hand in hand. And I think we've got, you know, if we, if we give them, if we pass giving money and they go to the bank, then I think we should at least get a letter from the bank.
Consensus there? Alderman Verbig.
Yes.
Consensus there? Okay.
So this is a really important question on how to move forward with this policy, being, does the applicant need to provide a "but for reasoning" to justify the grant funding? And if so, how should this be justified? So there's a lot of different scenarios depending on which building we're looking at in the downtown and whether or not the owner has any equity. There's some buildings in the downtown where the owner has paid for that building, owns it outright and may not be willing to necessarily make an investment into their property. If they have that financial capacity, should they, should they still be eligible for TIF funding for projects? I think this is really striking a balance between how to incentivize people wanting to make investments into their building and not giving money to someone who doesn't necessarily need it. How you could show that the "but for," it can come a lot of different ways. With some of the recent projects that we've looked at downtown, what we've, what we've done is kind of made an estimate on the value of a building post-construction or post-rehabilitation. And that financial gap is what we, what we've used to justify a "but for." We could take that approach. There's some other different approaches. This is something that we could also do some more research on and how other communities require applicants to provide that justification.
Alderman Norrico.
I, I think it's reasonable to construct some stipulations around the "but for" reasoning. I think it's important for us to be business-friendly, to incentivize, you know, current business owners, potentially new owners at some point. But we aren't a bank. And I don't think we should necessarily be seen as, you know, the first option. I'd like to think that business owners would work in concert with us and that we can assist them. But again, this isn't our primary business, our primary reason for being.
Any other comments on that? Alderman Jacobson.
I would defer slightly. I think the downtown has proven, all of the downtown meets the "but for" test. I mean, if, if the buildings were viable and they were generating a legitimate amount of rent, the owner would have been likely putting money back into them. You see several of the properties that have been fixed up and the owner did make significant investments in there to the point where I don't think there'll be a whole lot of projects on that building right now because of the length of time between the investment already put in till now. The reality is, all of the buildings downtown are well-undertended and well-underrented at their rent rolls. And I think that, that alone meets the "but for" test in terms of the investment we've already put down there. If it didn't already, we wouldn't have invested 15 million downtown. So, again, I think adding more hurdles and more hoops to jump through and those things is going to be perceived as dangling the incentive out there but not really committing to it on our end and not really going through as a good faith effort. If an owner is willing to invest a significant amount of money in the property to keep the building long-term up to code and up to a viable standard to continue to rent downtown, again, if we have the ability to support that effort, I think we should strongly consider it. And I don't want to put a whole bunch of roadblocks and speed bumps and hoops and jump ropes and slides and chutes and ladders and all those things that often overthinking does right now. We have the money, we have some, have the TIF open, at least in this iteration, for another couple of years. If we can act as that force multiplier to get, again, sometimes, in some cases, three times our money back on our investment, we're getting into construction season now. It's a small window. By the time we roll this out and it's the end of June, again, I don't want to push it until October, November, December, what we're looking at next year before we see any of these things, if at all. If we're going to do it, now's the time to do it. If we agree we should do it, we have to get it rolling as soon as possible.
Are we not beyond the point where we need to put up another roadblock? Are we not beyond the point where we're saying, well, that might improve downtown a little bit? Let's do something. Now, that's, that's my stance. And I, and I, I sense there's consensus here. Do I? Okay. Jason.
So this gets to your comment there earlier. Should the applicant adhere to a design guideline and review? And if so, what should the review process look like? So, in one iteration of the AIP, there was actually an AIP committee that reviewed applications. This was in chapter 48, which was actually removed last year. So there is currently nothing on our books that would require applicants for facade grants or any grants to go through this process. The Landmark Commission has been working for quite some time now on a new set of design guidelines. I think this, this process, depending on the type of project, not all projects necessarily need to go through this type of review process. Other ones that are more comprehensive might need to. So, if you could deliberate on this question.
My thought is, and I'll turn it over to you, Pat. My thought is, and I'll turn it over to you, Pat. Again, let's not let a design guideline be akin to a study or a consultant or something like that. Let's get going. Now, we've got to be reasonable. We're not going to build a spire in the middle of two of these beautiful architecturally appearing buildings. Do you know what I mean? But if somebody gives us a simple drawing of what it is that they want to do, my point is let's move forward. Alderman Fagan.
I'm with you 100%. They've got to, just like Mr. Pappas and Sun Dog came in and showed us what they had. I mean, it's, it's right there for us to see. But like to go through another committee? No.
Alderman Fanouken.
Jason, but what, at what point now does a project need to go through planning and zoning before it comes to us in their review? I mean, what's the, is there a dollar amount? Is there some kind of significant amount that it makes it go through there?
So, it would go through planning and zoning if there was anything related to the zoning. So, the Corson project required rezoning for those properties. Correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Freehurst Plaza did not go through planning and zoning or did that have to go through a zoning process?
No, my recollection is that it did.
Okay.
I just that I don't want that to become another one of the speed bumps that Alderman Jacobson referred to of it's something that it doesn't need to go to planning and zoning to be the guideline review and if it comes straight here, that just speeds up the process.
Okay. We're making some progress. Jason, next.
This, this is a really important question too. Should, should projects be considered on a rolling, first-come, first-served basis? Or what we can do as an alternative is open up the application period at a specific time of the year, say, right before construction season starts, which would allow us to review all of the applications on a merit basis and then choose those that rise to the top.
Thoughts on that? Alderman Norrico.
I prefer the first-come, first-served basis because I think the issue of merit, you know, seems really sticky at this point and, yeah, you know, as they come and when the dollars are gone, the dollars are gone and maybe you get in line for the next year then. And also, that's very clear for the applicants then.
Alderman Jacobson.
I have two answers to that question. I, again, I would agree with Alderman Norrico. Claiming merit, I think, creates a situation where there could be some very sore feelings if someone doesn't feel that they were considered fairly. And I just don't know how you can guarantee anyone not to feel that way doing it in that course of manner. I would like to see a first-come, first-served with priority given to those issues identified by code enforcement. That way, where our efforts have value. I mean, if we're going to spend time and money spending, sending the inspectors down there to do these friendly code reviews, that those projects obviously have a chance of instantly or immediately getting funded and that we're not identifying a problem and then telling the owner, sorry, there's no money left for you to fix it because someone else came, came quicker this week for you. I'd also like to make sure that the direction of the staff is if we go over in these projects, whatever allocated budget we come up with, that it's not a firm no at that point. I'd like to see the projects that come in after that and I don't want to get into a situation where we are now where staff is effectively telling people, sorry, there's no more funds left. Don't bother really applying because we don't have a firm program in place. I think that works against us in a way. So, again, I think we should list those projects as they come, priority to the code enforcement, delineated projects and anything above and beyond, I'd like to come back to council to have a discussion as to whether or not we can continue to fund projects and if they make sense for us.
I hope you gleaned quite a bit over this 55 minutes. You have one more time for one more question, Jason. You determined which one it is. Realizing that, you know, we, we can, we can revisit this, but, you know, what I, what I hope that you have is enough information gleaned out of this conversation tonight to where we can see something here within the next few weeks.
Absolutely. In that case, a question to go with this, can owners return for a second project? And if so, after what amount of time? I think there's a couple of scenarios. One building owner that I've been talking to has quite a bit of work, could end up being a million-dollar project if they wanted to fully rehabilitate one of the buildings. They do not have the financial capacity to take that all on at once. You could potentially phase an incentive or allow them to come back and do it piecemeal. Previous iterations of the AIP avoided that on purpose. They did not want to see multiple owners come back. I think you also have some properties, as I mentioned, some that have received funding through AIP previously, but do not have anything utilizing the second floor. Should those property owners or those buildings be eligible to come back and finish the job per se?
Any thoughts, one way or the other? Alderman Fanouken.
Well, my only thought on that is that the TIF as it currently exists is a very limited lifespan. So, unless something were to happen to change into a new TIF or extend this one, that there's really not going to be much amount of time for somebody to come back for a second bite at the apple. I mean, that's my one feeling on it right now, so.
Alderman Fager.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Alderman Fanouken and, you know, I'd want to see the project completed, you know, before they can come back. Couldn't, we couldn't stack up three projects all at once, but you'd have to complete the project before coming back. But yeah, the TIF has a limited lifespan.
You know what? Thank you, Jason. I hope you've gleaned enough here to at least come back with us with some kind of document that we can move forward with this so that we are addressing this issue. I would urge anyone who wants to see more information on this to access our, our agenda items tonight and pull up the PDF on that. I think you did a great job with giving a lot of examples from what these other communities did, you know, from Pekin to St. Charles to wherever. And I, and I do appreciate that work, Christine, in your, in your doing that. I also suggest that we put that Q and A and that full PDF on our website with, so that folks can go to our website, see that information and see what it is that we as a council had the opportunity to look at in terms of background information. Does that make sense? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned. City council starts at 6:10. 6:10.